Welcome, it's 5:30. We've got a good crowd with us tonight, so welcome. Can we fix this microphone, do you think, Mark or Ed? Anyway, welcome to the regularly scheduled Monday, April 7th, meeting of the Waterloo City Council. Glad you all could be here, and if you happen to be, watch us on our delayed version on public access television, welcome to you also. Madam Clerk, would you start us by reading the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Walper.
Here.
Mr. Hertz.
Very good, thank you. If you'd all join me, please, in standing for just a moment, I want reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Tom Lynn, one of our council members at large. Mr. Lynn, would you start us, please?
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walper.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and number 11, we want to amend the supplemental total amount from $134,257 to $671,285. Number 18, we want to amend the resolution to include the date of public hearing as May 12, 2014. And we're going to table number 20. And also the approval of the minutes of March 24, 2014, regular session as proposed.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda as amended or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. We have some proclamations tonight. Generally, I read the proclamations, but I have had a request tonight by Ms. Cole. Would you like to read the equal pay proclamation?
I sure would.
All right, well, if you would like to come forward and grab a microphone, and I will give you the equal pay proclamation. I believe we have Rita Grimm. Is Rita here? Rita, why don't you come forward, would you please? And you're going to have that for people to hear you. And there is your proclamation. Just come up with Ms. Cole, Ms. Grimm, great.
Sooner or later, we're not going to have to do this proclamation.
I agree. I agree.
Whereas since the passage of the Equal Pay Act in 1963, and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act in 1964, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of inequitable pay. And whereas in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which amends Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, and now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which amends the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas the U.S. Census Bureau shows year-round, full-time working women in 2013 earned only, say this with me, 77 percent of the earnings of year-round, full-time working men. And whereas wage disparity persists across all educational levels, as women with a college degree or higher lose $713,000 over a 40-year period versus a $270,000 loss for women who did not finish high school. And whereas over a working lifetime, this wage disparity costs the average American woman and her family an estimated $700,000 to $2 million in lost wages, impacting social security benefits and pensions. And whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors, and whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April 8th, symbolizes the time in which wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, Buck Clark, Mayor of Waterloo, proclaims Tuesday, April 8th, as equal payday in Waterloo, Iowa, to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force and to further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. Would you like, do you have anything that you would like to add?
We are having an equal pay event tomorrow at the YWCA. It begins with vendors at 5:00. We will have speakers, and there'll be free food and beverages, so please come.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. All right, I'm going to pick it up here, and I'm not sure, I know there's certain folks here tonight to accept the proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, so if you ladies can come forward, please. And I'm embarrassed, because I, all I know is Jilly, and it's more than Jilly, right?
Yes, Jill Gilmore.
Jill, good to see you, and Alicia. Okay, and would you like to come up also, please? And you are?
Laura.
Laura, nice to meet all of you guys, you're with the next one, Laura. Very good, but they're kind of, they're kind of connected, sort of, so. We are here to proclaim Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I will start. Whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds. And whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas sexual assault is devastating not only to the survivor, but also for the family and friends of the victim or survivor. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own. And whereas we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support victims, survivors, and their families, as well as support those agencies providing services to the victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2014, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Waterloo, a city in Blackhawk County, and encourage all citizens to learn more about preventing sexual violence. So who would like to accept this? All of you? There you are, and one of you needs to make a comment or two. Let me make sure, there we go, there we go. Alicia, please.
Alicia, thank you. Riverview Center would like to thank you, the mayor, and the city council for acknowledging the importance of bringing awareness to the sexual abuse and assault problem that affects so many men, women, girls, and boys. Every two minutes, an American is sexually assaulted. Two-thirds of assaults are committed by someone the victim knows. One of six women and one in 33 men has been a victim of completed or attempted rape. Remember, if anyone discloses abuse to you, listen, support, and refer them to services, because you may be the only one there brave enough to tell, and you can play an influential part in their future healing. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you ladies very much. Thank you guys for what you do. And Laura, you're going to stay with us for just a moment here, and we're going to do another proclamation that is for Crime Victims' Rights. Crime Victims' Rights Week proclamation, and all of you guys are involved with that also, with what you do. Very good, so, this is a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas in 1984, the Victims of Crime Act established the Office for Victims of Crime to provide a permanent source of support for crime victim services throughout the United States. And whereas Iowans are victims of more than 230,000 crimes each year, with these crimes impacting family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, leaving a lasting physical, emotional, or financial impact on everyone across all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. And whereas since it was established in 1989, the Iowa Crime Victim Assistance Division of the Attorney General's Office has provided direct assistance to more than 69,000 Iowans annually by funding local victim service providers, reaching over 40,000 victims through the VINE, V-I-N-E, notification program, and providing reimbursement to over 2,000 victims for related victimization expenses. And whereas victim service providers in local victim service agencies, county attorney's offices, the prosecution division of the Attorney General, the Board of Parole, and the Office of Victim Programs of the Department of Corrections face challenges each year to reach and serve all victims throughout the criminal justice process. And whereas now is the time to embrace a new emphasis on learning what works in reaching underserved victims and meeting victims' needs from arrest to conviction during an offender's incarceration and release back into community, and throughout a victim's healing journey. And whereas National Crime Victims' Rights Week, April 6 through the 12, 2014, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas the state of Iowa is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice agencies, and concerned citizens throughout Iowa and America to raise awareness of victims' rights and observe National Crime Victims' Rights Week. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through the 12, 2014, as National Crime Victims' Rights Week, and reaffirm this city's commitment to the respect and enforcement of victims' rights, addressing victims' needs, and expressing our appreciation to those victims and crime survivors who have turned personal tragedy into a motivational, educational force, building a more informed and just community. What a proclamation, Laura, that is, that's good stuff, and something that we need to practice what we preach. I'm going to let you say a few words if you'd like, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for acknowledging this is Crime Victim Rights Week on behalf of the First Judicial District, and Waypoint, and Riverview, as well as the Board of Parole this year. We will be having an event at the New Waterloo Women's Center for Change on Wednesday at 10:00 a.m., if anybody would like to come. And I just would like to thank you for your continued support in honoring victims and the advocates who have worked so hard and diligently on their behalf.
Thank you very much, ladies, and again, thank you guys for what you do for all of us and for our community, it's much appreciated, so thank you very much. Okay, and I just need to recognize Tim Coleman, and Tim is here somewhere. Tim, just stand up for me, would you? Those of you that come to the council meetings regularly know that I have a practice of recognizing an employee every month and naming him the Team Member of the Month. Tim Coleman, who works at our library, is a valued member of our library services staff and has grown, rose to that level, and Tim, it's just my honor to say thank you and congratulations for what you do to be April's Team Member of the Month from the library. You represent the city very well and the library, so thank you for what you do, much appreciated. You bet, okay. And Tammy Turner, is Tammy here? Tammy, come on up, yes, you are here, very good. Tammy is here to give us a little presentation on Waste Track Recycling Education with the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Commission, so go ahead, Tammy, the floor is yours.
I'm with Waste Track, which is a partnership between Blackhawk County Conservation and the Solid Waste Commission, so on behalf of the commission, I want to thank the City of Waterloo for helping to co-host an event that's taking place this Saturday, April 12. So it's our day to collect some of the household hazardous materials that people may have in their homes or garages, and it's also the day to get rid of those old computer monitors and old TVs. So it's going to be this Saturday, April 12, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the wastewater treatment plant. So we'll have signs at the corner of Mitchell and Highway 218 to kind of tell people where to go. And if people have questions, they can call our county office, and that's 266-8722. So if they're not sure if they have an acceptable item, if they're not sure if the certain household cleaner is accepted, they can call us, or they can check Waste Track, so it's T-R-A-C dot org, and we have a pretty extensive list there as well. So we have kind of a list of things that we do and do not take, so we'd be happy to kind of look up the list for them. Just a reminder that it's just for the hazardous chemicals, it's different than the citywide cleanup day. So at our event, kind of like the big reminders is that we don't accept paint, and it's not a day for appliances, it's just for the electronics, so like they have the old TVs and computer monitors, like I said. But there is a pretty big list of some of the electrical things that we're taking as well. So our electronics are going to fall into two categories, things with CRT, or that's a cathode ray tube, so think about the old picture tubes, and then if it's TV with the big old bump in the back, or if it's a monitor that's like about like, you know, like a foot and a half deep, those are the ones that are a little more expensive to recycle, so the Solid Waste Commission is putting a limit on those, so you can recycle two per vehicle free. After that, it's $5 a CRT. And then just a reminder that we are still looking for volunteers, so if anybody wants to help me lift TVs on Saturday, they can call my office, and that's 266-8722 again. And then just a reminder that all loads coming to the event do need to be 100% tied down and fully covered. And I'll open up to any questions anybody may have. But otherwise, I think we've done a pretty good job of blanketing the whole Cedar Valley with the green flyers, it was in the saver, in the courier, we've been trying to put billboards up, kind of just let everybody know, just because it only does happen twice a year, just in the spring, and then we usually do an event in the fall in Cedar Falls, so that will be in September.
Very good, Tammy, thank you. Does any, counsel, does anybody have any questions of Tammy? Very good.
All right, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, Tammy, it's a great program.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walper.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's 1A through B12, and also with that, with the bills payment, I believe Ms. Cole has.
The bills this week are $2,566,110.19, 2,566,110.19.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote yes on everything except items 1, B, 1, 2, and 3, I'd vote no on those three items.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, except item 1, B, 2, and 3.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Motion's carry, I'm just checking to see which items were. Okay, thank you, counsel, the consent agenda does pass. Let's move to item number 2, please, the first public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number 2, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the master development agreement and supplemental development agreement with Grand Investments LLC for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property at a cost of $1, commonly known as a former grand hotel site at Westmullen Avenue and Jefferson Street for the purpose of construction of an approximate 70-unit condominium development.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number 2? There are written objections on file to item number 2, they would be on file in the clerk's office if anybody would like to see those. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number 2, the master development for the Grand Hotel Site at this time? I'll ask a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments or concerns at this time?
I'm sorry, and file written comments, I'm sorry, I forgot that. Could we just maybe have Mr. Anderson give us a little bit of an overview? I know there's been some question about this development agreement being a little bit out of the ordinary compared to what we have done in the past, but I believe we also have determined that this is not a unique offering, so if we could maybe just have him speak to that a little bit, I think that would be appropriate.
Noel, would you just give us a Freers Digest version of this development agreement, please?
Well, Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, going back, the city acquired this property for a number of reasons. Number one, it was becoming a blighted property, it was flood damaged, they had approximately 27 rooms in there that had never been repaired from the flood. We believe that the current owners at that time were going to repair the project to the minimum possible, so it would still continue to be somewhat of an eyesore as one of the main gateways into the City of Waterloo. Given its proximity to the sportsplex, to the tech works project that's pending, and to Deere and their museum, this was a priority area for the City of Waterloo according to the downtown development master plan. So the city did acquire the property, we bought the property for $800,000, we demolished it for approximately $400,000. This development agreement would deed the land to the developer for $1 in exchange for them building an approximately $9 million investment on the site with a $6 million new taxable value. This is phase 1 of a three-phased project. Assuming that each project would be about the same with a $6 million new value coming into the City of Waterloo, the cost to the city would be repaid within a 10-year timeframe.
Ms. Cole, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, and I was going to say also, as I remember going back a little bit historically, that it had become a drug haven and a area of other illicit behavior, I mean, there were a variety of reasons that we wanted to take that property and clean it up.
That'd be correct. Ms. Cole?
Noel, if you could just give a, you handed out this wonderful piece of paper before the meeting, if you could just give us some of the highlights of the development agreements that we have had.
Sure.
That would help.
And Councilman Lynn had started out asking for the last five projects for industrial, commercial, and retail, so I kind of went through, and in this handout ahead of, before you, you can see that I went through and kind of noted the City of Waterloo's economic development plan. We normally give one, we usually give free land for projects, usually an acre for every 10,000 square feet. We have a little bit of flexibility in there for projects that may have a larger amount of trucking or employees or something like that. And then if the project's over $1 million in new taxable value, they're also eligible for tax rebates, generally five years at 50%. I also went through and kind of broke down, each TIF district's a little bit different, of course, downtown Rath and Logan are all urban renewal TIF districts, so they're working to eliminate blighted areas. A lot of the project sites within those TIF districts are redevelopment sites, meaning that there's not large, vast acres waiting development, who are tearing down old buildings or tearing down dilapidated or blighted buildings, a lot of times also dealing with environmental issues, brownfields, grayfield sites. The Midport TIF is kind of a mix of urban renewal, it's designated as a blighted TIF district, it also has some large acres in there for economic development, so it's kind of a mix of those two. I did note that the Conagra Pudding Plant was developed in that area with a 20-year tax abatement for the Phase 1 project, and then a 20-year tax rebate schedule for the Phase 2. Each of those was over $40 million investment by the pudding plant with about over $12 million in new taxable value per phase. The San Martin Northeast and Martin Road TIF districts were put in place for developing industrial and business park settings, so they were essentially vacant land, again, giving one acre of land for every 10,000 square feet in five years of 50% tax rebates. The city did give 10 years at 50% tax rates for the Ferguson project, as it was a $22 million new taxable value project, a very large distribution center. The Crossroads Area was recently put into a TIF district with the least amount of incentives at one year of tax rebates for new, every new $1 million in taxable value. The council does have some flexibility in there if the site qualifies under the state definition of brownfield or grayfield development. Example of that would be the Kmart development was given more years because they had a lot of difficulties to deal with in terms of old infrastructure in there, and that existing building had sat vacant for a number of years, according to the state code for grayfield. In cases where the city owns the land in our TIF districts, we normally deed the land for $1. In cases where the land is privately owned, we try to give the same deal, so the city either funds the acquisition of the land to the company, or the company buys the land and is given tax rebates to pay them back for the land, so we call it the equivalent of free land. So going through the past five projects were industrial that were approved by council, the first one there is a Cedar Valley warehouse, it's a 50,000-square-foot building on Geraldine Road, which is the second phase of the RISE money we built out there from the state. We gave them free land, five years of 50% tax rebates. It is a 50,000-square-foot building with a new taxable value of $1.2 million. Kelker Properties in the same area to the 50,000-square-foot building on Geraldine Road, again, just off Airline Highway, is a 10,000-square-foot building, free land, and it is a $352,000 industrial project. MMC Properties went on the lot next to them, 10,000-square-foot building, we gave them free land, and it's a 360,000 industrial property. Diz Dervik built a building on Marnie Avenue, just south of Ridgeway along 63 South. He bought the land, so we gave him the equivalent of free land through tax rebates, it's a 6,000-square-foot building with a $328,000 industrial new taxable value. The last industrial one was Turnier on Wagner Road, that was some free land. The city vacated the land, it was designated as right-of-way but not needed. It's an 11,600-square-foot building, $628,310 industrial project, and I'll note that he's also building an addition on right now, which is always our goal, to get more development to occur. On the commercial side, Crossing Point Plaza is a former Kmart Plaza, developers Bentrow, they were given 10 years of 50% tax rebate since they met the definition of grayfield. It's a 90,000-square-foot rehabilitation of the older building with a new taxable value of $6.3 million at the end of the project, retail project. CVS at Highway 63 in Franklin, the city vacated some land, some former street that was not used for right-of-way purposes, and conveyed that for $1. They were given six years at 100%. It's a 15,000-square-foot building, $1.5 million retail value. Fairfield Inn is under construction now in the Crossroads Area, just south of Toys R Us slightly. They were given eight years of 50% tax rebates, again, because they met the definition of a grayfield site. It's an 81-room, multi-story hotel, 2.65 million dollar hotel project. The Logan Subway was given six years at 100% tax rebates, again, there on the west side of 63, north of Allen Hospital, north of the Hy-Vee. It's a 5,800-square-foot building, $1 million retail project. And there was a small strip mall built out in the front part of Logan Plaza, six years at 100% tax rebates, 7,500-square-foot building, it's a $1.1 million retail project. In terms of residential projects, the first one there is Dolly James LLC, this is the Sycamore Street condos, also known as the Rivers Trail, they were given free land. The city acquired that land under a brownfields grant a number of years back, in fact, 2004. The grant specifically was acquired to return industrial development property along the riverfront, indoor riverfront housing. The city demolished the buildings at a cost of about $70,000. They were given $1,000,000. $70,000. They were given 10 years at 100 percent tax rebates. They built six 12-unit condo buildings with a $6 million residential new taxable value. John Roof was approved at East Third and Lafayette. He was given free land, 10 years at 50 percent tax rebates. He'll be building six brownstone residential units, which has a value of $840,000 in residential project. John Roof was approved at the Francis Grouse Site. There was no, that's not in a TIF district, so it's a CURA. They'll be eligible for. He'll be building eight new single-family homes there, so an estimated $1.2 million residential project. John Roof at East Eighth Street and Lafayette, that was given CURA. They built five new single-family homes. This is also under the state's Down Payment Assistance Program that we were able to take advantage of to build new housing in Waterloo. It's a $750,000 residential project. And the other residential one that was approved, Sunnyside South, which is the sale of part of San Marnon. It was given free land. Of course, the developer had to move the road at a cost of approximately $1.6 million to the developer. They are eligible for the CLURA for new one or two family homes. They plotted 22 new single-family lots created, so they could have a value of $8.8 million.
Thank you.
Good recap, Noel. Any further questions regarding this project? There has been a motion made to close the hearing and file oral and written comments. With no further comments, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing said sale and conveyance, and authorize the city attorney to prepare and deliver deed accordingly.
Second.
It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving said master development agreement and supplemental development agreement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Been much discussion about this project, and the end is going to be a great project. Mr. Dawson, thank you for investing in Waterloo. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of the notice of the public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2014 boathouse roof replacement project.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to the boathouse roof replacement?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number three, the boathouse roof replacement project? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes. Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids and refer to Leisure Services Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, on the roof replacement project tonight, we only have one bid, and we have an engineer's estimate on this project of $67,500. Madam Clerk?
The bid is from DMG Metalworks Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond is in the form of a check for $3,906. The option one bid price is for $76,76,000, 000.00, with option two at $78,120,78,120.00.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is someone here from, please? Item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move a receiving file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the 2014 right-of-way mowing.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to our mowing contract?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against our 2014 mowing contract? A second time.
I move right-of-way close to hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, just one question.
Mr. Jones?
Does this contract include garbage removal before they actually mow?
Mr. Bolger, yes, it does. Further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move we adopt a resolution confirming approval of specs, bid document, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
That's it? I move we adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
I move a receiving file and instruct city clerk to open and read bids and refer to Leisure Services Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have two bids tonight for our right-of-way mowing bid. We don't have an estimate on this, so we'll just see what we come up with. We have several options. I'm not sure if this is going to be something Kim.
And this is probably where we're not going to rate them on.
Yeah, there's five different options on each bid, so we will open these tonight. We have bids from, I believe, from B&amp;B Lawn Care and from Professional Lawn Care, LLC. We'll open these, we'll give them to Leisure Service, and Mr. Bolger, if you can sort through all of the different options, all of them will be on file in the clerk's office if anyone would like to review them. Is there anyone else other than the two that I mentioned?
No.
B&amp;B Lawn Care and Professional Lawn Care Service, so if you would.
B&amp;B Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa, and.
Okay.
And B&amp;B's bond is in the form of a check for $3,000.
Okay.
It's also of Waterloo. And their bond is also in the form of a check for $3,000.
Thank you very much. JB, you want to come and get the bids, please? Item number five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number five, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the Waterloo Public Library new security camera system.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to this item?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the new security system in the library? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids and refer to building official maintenance administrator for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, for the library's security system, we have three bidders tonight. We have an estimate of $90,000 on the new camera system. Madam Clerk, please.
The first bid is from Communications Engineering Company of Hiawatha, Iowa. And the bid amount is for $117,221,117,221.00.
There is no bond or security required when we're buying a piece of equipment.
Correct. The second bid is from Hawkeye Alarm and Signal. And their bid is for $80,360, 80,360.00. There may be alternates on some of these too. And the final bid is from RC Systems Radio Communications Company. And their bid is for $83,533.49, 83,533.49.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Craig? Item number six, please, counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Number six, a motion to receive and file proof of publication of a notice of a public hearing for the fiscal year 2014 West Airline Highway Rehabilitation, contract number 827.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to this item?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against our 2014 Airline Highway Rehabilitation? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to open and read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. The motion carries, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, we have two bids tonight for the Airline Highway Rehab Contract. Our estimate on this project is $693,531.
The first bid is from Chester Bros Construction Company of Hannibal, Missouri. The bid bond is for 5 percent. The total base bid, again, this one also has several alternates, but the total base bid is $894,965.28, 894,965.28. The second bid is from Iowa Erosion Control Inc. of Victor, Iowa. Their bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total base bid is for $796,278.60, 796,278.60.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Eric, please.
That's something important.
Item number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reopen and hold a hearing, which is continued from March 3, 2014, on a request for proposals for asbestos abatement services for the following properties: 134 Dearborn Avenue, 928 Mulberry, 717 Vinton, 927 Mullin, 67 Franklin Street, 820 Fowler Street, 409 State Street, 520 Cottage Street, 1013 Lincoln Street, and 420 Dawson.
Second.
Very good, counsel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. That hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number seven for those abatements? There are none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number seven on tonight's agenda, the asbestos abatement for several properties? A second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution confirming approval of requests for proposals, plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to open and read bids and refer to Community Planning and Development Director for review.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a whole bunch of bids for this one tonight. One, two, three, four, five. We have six bids for this asbestos abatement. Our estimate on the project is $54,000. See where we come in at. Madam Clerk, please.
The first bid is from AAA Budget Environmental Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. Their bid bond is in the form of a check for $1,454.50, 1,454.50. And their bid is for $23,090, 23,090.00. The next bid is from Abatement Specialties LLC of Cedar Rapids, Iowa.
Noel is smiling behind you, Steve.
And the bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $38,437, 38,437.00. And the bid bond is for five percent. And the total bid is for thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, three eight, comma, four three seven, point zero zero. The next bid is from Active Thermal Concepts of Hiawatha, Iowa. And their bid bond is for five percent. And their total bid is for sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, six seven, comma, nine four five, point zero zero. And the next bid is from Abanced Environmental Testing and Abatement, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa. And their bid bond is for five percent. And their bid is for thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, three seven, comma, four four four, point zero zero. The next one is from Eco Midwest, Inc. of Inner Grove Heights, Minnesota. Their bid bond is for five percent. And their bid is for thirty-two thousand, three two, comma, zero zero zero, point zero zero. And the final one is from New Horizons Enterprises, LLC of Kansas City, Missouri. And their bid bond is for five percent. And their bid is for twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars, two eight, comma, three four one, point zero zero.
Very good bids. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Stop grinning, Noah. Item number eight, please, our last bid for the night, our last bid opening.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing regarding requests for proposals for asbestos, asbestos abatement services for 801 to 805 Commercial Street.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did we have any written objections on file to this request?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the asbestos abatement at 800 block of Commercial Street? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution confirming approval of request for proposals, plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to open and read bids and refer to Community Planning and Development Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have five bids for this item tonight, five bids with an estimate of eighty-seven thousand dollars on this. While Madam Clerk is opening the bids, I just, I see Mr. Coolman is still with us. Tim, normally I give the okay that if you want to sit through the rest of the council meeting, you're welcome. But on the other hand, if you feel the need to leave, you won't offend anybody either. So, just letting you know that you don't have to stay. But we appreciate your sitting and listening and getting a lesson in civics here. Thank you. Yeah. And he's going to leave. Thanks, Tim.
The first bid is from AAA Budget Environmental, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond is in the form of a check for two thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents, two, comma, three four four, point three five. And the bid is for forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, four six, comma, eight eight seven, point zero zero. The next bid is from Abatement Specialties, LLC of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. The bid bond is for five percent. And the total bid is for sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, six one, comma, eight seven six, point zero zero. The next bid is from Active Thermal Concepts, Hiawatha, Iowa. Their bid bond is for five percent. And their bid is for a hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, one one nine, comma, six one five, point zero zero. The next bid is from New Horizons Enterprises, LLC of Kansas City, Missouri. Their bid bond is for five percent. And their bid is for a hundred and twenty thousand, seventy-five dollars, one two zero, comma, zero seven five, point zero zero. And the final bid is from Site Services, Inc. of Algonah, Iowa. Their bid bond is for five percent. And their total bid is for seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, sorry, fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, five eight, comma, nine five six, point zero zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, this is tonight on this project. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. That's all of our bid openings for tonight. Let's get into the resolutions. Let's take nine, ten, and eleven, please, with the reader recognizing that number eleven has the amended amount to it, please. Nine, ten, and eleven.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
I'm looking for the amended amount. I think I've got it. Nine is a resolution setting the date of hearing is April 21st, 2014, to review the proposed funding recommendations set forth by the Community Development Board for CDBG and Home Program Funds for the FY 2015 Waterloo-Cedar Falls Home Consortium Consolidated Plan Application. Is that known as CAPER? And instruct the city clerk to publish notice. Ten is a resolution approving the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board recommendation for funding in the Event Capital Hotel Motel Tax Grant Funds for FY 2015 totaling a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, three hun- a hundred and forty-seven, three hundred and twenty-five.
One more time.
One more time, a hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy cents.
Cool.
And finally, eleven is a resolution approving a supplemental agreement with Amant, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of six hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars in conjunction with additional plan development services for the FY 2014 Kimball Avenue Transportation Improvements, Contract Number Eight Four Three, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Cole. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions or concerns regarding nine, ten, or eleven?
Mr. Mayor, could we just have maybe a little overview on number eleven, why the dramatic increase, sir?
Eric, please.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. Actually, the reason the number changed there is the total agreement is six hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. The number that was in the agenda was the city's match, but we're actually signing an agreement for that much, and then we'll get reimbursed for eighty percent. So, we just thought it would be more reflective of what you're actually signing, but...
Really not a change?
Not really, no. No, and this is the construction-related services for the Kimball Avenue Project.
Very good. Good explanation. Further questions? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please, on nine, ten, and eleven.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
I will abstain, yes, on nine and eleven, and I will abstain on item ten, not because I disagree with anything that's there, thank you, Convention and Visitors Bureau, but because my employer is one of the recipients of the grant, and I don't want it to look bad.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Let's do twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number twelve, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving submission of federal aid agreement for transportation alternative program project, TAP-U-8155741-8107. The funding agreement covers eighty percent of the total cost of eligible items up to a maximum amount of four hundred and twelve thousand dollars to be used for the fiscal year 2014 Shawless Road Recreational Trail Extension Phase One, Contract Number Eight Five Eight, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Item thirteen is adopting a resolution approving construction plans for paving, sanitary sewer, water, and storm sewer serving Hammond Hills Sixth Edition, as submitted by VJ Engineering of Cedar Falls, Iowa. And item fourteen is adopting a resolution approving agreement with Waterloo Waterworks for water main replacements in conjunction with the fiscal year 2014 Street Reconstruction Program, Contract Number Eight Five Nine, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments or questions regarding twelve, thirteen, fourteen? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Next three, please, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wilper.
Number fifteen is a resolution supporting the continuation of Main Street Waterloo Program, authorizing the mayor to execute a program agreement with the Iowa Department of Economic Development, the Updowntowners of Waterloo, Inc., doing business as Main Street Waterloo Partnership and Main Street Waterloo, for the purpose of continuing the Main Street Program in Waterloo from July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2016. Sixteen is a resolution set the date of hearing as April 21st, 2014, to approve the request of Harris Cleaning of Waterloo, Iowa, for a site plan amendment to the M2P Plan Industrial District to allow for the construction of an eighty-by-one-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot, ten-thousand-square-foot industrial building located east of 2366 Newell Street, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. Seventeen is a resolution set the date of hearing as April 14, 2014, for the request by Jared and Laurie Honerman to vacate the fifty-foot plotted building line of Lot 22 of Guernsey Second, Orange View Plot, located at 1360 Angus Drive, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. Second.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Wilper, counsel, do you have any comments or questions regarding any of those three, fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen?
No, sir.
That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
I was just checking, did we, did we read the amended resolution on that, or did we read the resolution as...
It's coming up.
I'm sorry, that's eighteen. Let's do eighteen and nineteen, I'm getting ahead of myself. Please, counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole.
I'm over, adopt a resolution approving request to set the date of public hearing as May 12th, to approve certain actions with respect to the Verden Creek Drainage Improvement Project, to establish the amount of just compensation for certain property interests to be acquired for project purposes, and to authorize the use of condemnation procedures for acquisition of said property interests in furtherance of the proper project objectives. Nineteen is a resolution approving the application for SFY 2015 Burn-JAG Grant Funds to be used for funding the Tri-County Drug Enforcement Task Force, and authorize Director of Safety Services to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding eighteen or nineteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Good, I know that eighteen, we're just setting the date, but could we maybe have a little overview on that, because I did get a call today kind of questioning what that's all about, so if we could just have a little explanation, that'd be great.
Mr. Anderson or Thorson, which one is it? Mr. Anderson, okay.
I gladly, Eric, Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. And this is just going ahead with potential of condemnation actions to acquire. We're working to acquire land essentially coming from Highway 63 north of Ralston. It'll come back down behind where East Fourth Street would be extended. Following the state code, we should do this at the beginning of every project in case we have to use condemnation. Obviously, that's kind of a last resort for the city of Waterloo. We always try to work with the property owners and come up with just a straight sale from them. At the same time, if we end up having to go to condemnation, it's decided by a jury of people with real estate experience that look at appraisals and pertinent information to come up with that amount.
And what's the purpose of this project, I guess, I'm sorry, that's what...
That'll defer to Mr. Thorson.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer, this is a project to improve one of the tributaries to the Verden Creek Channel, and it relates a lot to the development area that we were hopefully going to have a Menards project, but hopefully we'll still have some projects in the future. Everything drains in this direction, and the existing channel is not well-defined. This will provide us a more defined drainage channel and a place for drainage to go for development in that area.
Thank you. Mr. Thorson, before you leave the microphone, how long has, this is in the CIP program, and how long have we had money for this project, and how long have we been planning on this project?
I think we've been working on this project for about five years from the time we started with a consultant, put it together, and then have acquired funding built up enough to handle the size of the project.
Thank you. Further questions? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Let's do item number twenty, please.
Twenty-one. Twenty was tabled.
I'm sorry, well, somebody's got to do it.
Yeah, we need a motion to table.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I see.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to table amending the City Code of Ordinances Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter One Traffic Code, by adding Section Six dash one dash four, City Infractions Ticket.
Second.
Very good, there's a motion, second. Counsel, do you have any questions at this time on this? Mr. Schmidt?
Do we, don't we typically have a timeframe on a tabling? Is there a timeframe involved?
We do, I ask this to be tabled indefinitely at this point. I think we're going to get something worked out relatively soon, but I hesitated to put a time on it, Mr. Schmidt. So, unless counsel has strong feelings, otherwise I'd like to table it indefinitely.
I'm fine with that.
Other further questions? Very good. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel, very much. Item twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number twenty-one, I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, in ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, by adding a new Chapter 14 Housing Cooperative Conversion of Title IX Building Regulations, submitted by Craig Clark, Building Official Maintenance Administrator, and that's in ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, by adding a new Chapter 14 Housing Cooperative Conversion of Title IX Building Regulations.
Second.
Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding this item?
Got, I guess, two questions. Number one, could we just kind of have an overview of what this is? And then number two, I'm wondering if there's a time element involved with this project or this...
Craig?
...motion.
Craig Clark, Building Official. To answer, I'll go in the opposite order. Answer it first, the time, no. I simply had the work session, not a work session, the ordinance committee a few weeks ago, reached out to a few people to see, you know, any questions or concerns. Haven't heard really much on it, so timeframe-wise, no, there's no issue. What this ordinance is dealing with is housing cooperatives. It's actually been in the state code for quite some time, and we just happened to see a few come in last year and this year in the, through the tax rule. And so, we looked at addressing this situation. Cedar Falls did it, I believe, about a year and a half ago. And so, what it basically does is puts an apartment, a condo, and a housing cooperative all on the exact same page for the building code. So, whether you're living of any of the three, they will all be the same.
So, it's somewhat of a safety issue as much as anything?
Yes, it would be a safety issue, and this was the big concern back when the condos took over quite a long time ago, and this seems to be the new thing, and the condos were probably eight, 10 years ago. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just for everybody's benefit, counsel and the audience tonight, that Mr. Clark, who just spoke, has a family issue going on tonight that he's asked, well, once he read his motion, if it was okay with me if he left, and I gave him permission, so I'm not sure what your timeframe is, Clark, but, Craig, but feel free if you need to get somewhere to go ahead and go.
I have a disappointed four-year-old.
Okay, okay. Any further questions, counsel? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion suspending the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Very good, we will take this up for the second reading next week. Item number twenty-two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move we approve change order number one for a net increase not to exceed negotiated price of eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars to add one zero zero five Lafayette Street and five thirty-three Cottage Street for work performed by Lehman Trucking and Excavating, Inc. of Waterloo, in conjunction with demolition and site clearance services, no regulated asbestos-containing materials, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item number twenty-two?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to instruct City Engineer to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen sidewalk repair program, Zone Four, and trail repairs, contract number eight six three.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution setting date of hearing and bid opening as April twenty-first, 2014, and instruct city clerk to publish notice of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
The motion carries, very good. Last item for tonight, counsel, item twenty-four, please. Mr. Schmidt?
Item number four, I'd like to make a motion approving change order number two for a net increase of sixty thousand dollars for work performed by J. and K. Contracting of Ames, Iowa, for the No Name Creek Interceptor Sewer Project, contract number eight four nine, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Questions or comments, counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, counsel, just to say, should those be voice votes, or are those okay?
Questions or voice votes?
It's the end of our regular scheduled business tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, we got a good council meeting tonight, lots of important stuff. Thank you, counsel, for all of that. It is time for all presentations. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have something that you'd like to address the mayor or the counsel with tonight, please just step to our microphone over here. Please give us your name and address, and also please limit your comments to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey.
May I bring something up real briefly?
Sure.
Okay, what, something that I found out here in the last few days, which I never knew about, but I just wanted to let people know about, is that there is a property tax credit available for low-income people who are elderly and or disabled. And that's available between January first and June first, and its requirements are for the elderly, that they be sixty-five years of age, and their household income has to be less than approximately twenty-two thousand dollars, and I just would like to make sure the public out there is aware of it, being that there's so much concern for this issue.
Good information. Pat, how do they apply for that?
They can get the form through either online or through the Blackhawk County Treasurer.
Thank you, good information. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Pat. Yes, sir, name and address in three minutes, please, Randy.
Randy Hare, one eleven Highland. Just, this is just so I can make sure I understand correctly. Earlier tonight, there was a comment in the prior session about moving the Waterloo Animal Control to the city building at Eleventh and Blackhawk, and a comment was made that it's always been part of the plan, and based on that assertion, the cost of doing this must have been planned and part of the original budget proposal. Have I understood that correctly?
Well, Randy, I made the statement that you're referring to, that animal control was always planned to go to that. That's probably not a correct statement. We looked at a couple of buildings for that. We looked at the traffic, sign and traffic control building right across from the city hall. The police department kind of wanted that. We had a little bit of a conflict there. We also looked at the old food bank building that we, that we own, and that was too big, and it didn't really work out. We settled on the.
That looks like a nice pick. It's a good building.
And it's working out very well for us. Sandy's working very hard.
My only question on this really was that early on in this whole process, I had asked questions about, because of the comparing of the Humane Society bid against the city's cost of doing this, and that they were comparable, or it was a little bit better working for the city. And if this was part of that bid from the city, in effect, then it wasn't really talking apples and oranges at that time, and I was just curious, because I had asked before, what is the cost of doing this? And I always got, the answer I always got was, we don't know, because we don't know what it's going to cost.
Okay, this amount was not in the figures that we used to compare the animal control price with what the city can do.
We just knew we were going to do it, we didn't know how much.
That's, that's correct. And, and we're going to have a great facility down there. I'm, I'm very proud of what animal control is doing.
I have no doubt of that. I'm just curious about the money.
Yeah, this, this amount was not in that.
Do we know yet how much it's going to cost?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. I see in the minutes, or the procedures tonight, again, that we've got some change orders, increasing the cost of different projects. You did several bids tonight on different projects. None of it's been approved, I understand, because it went to the different departments. But when you have a bid bond submitted, what does that bid bond actually cover? Shouldn't it cover errors and omissions, so that when they do find something different, we don't get these change orders, and it doesn't cost us as taxpayers any more money? Because every time I turn around, come into a council meeting, there's a change order coming, and there's another, I don't know, like this number twenty-four, a net increase of sixty thousand dollars. What was the original bid? And is that fifty-six, now it's a hundred and five, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifteen, whatever, you know, see what I'm saying? That it's getting missed, and it's costing us as taxpayers every time we turn around.
Thank you, Mr. Dreyer. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
If anybody else from the audience has any questions or comments, but I would, you know, just to follow up to the comment about this central garage and the animal control, I guess I would, I would like to respectfully ask for a work session on this whole project, and I understand going back a couple of weeks to a conversation you and I had, that you were not the mayor when the council approved the new central garage. But I am convinced that part of that conversation, part of that approval for building that garage, and I think that garage is a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand square feet, was that we were going to be able to take the existing facilities that those various departments rent and get those back on the tax roll. I believe our planning and zoning department indicated some of those buildings had some great value to them potentially, and that was part of the reason I voted to approve that. And now it seems like, number one, some of those buildings are already kind of being claimed by some department heads for their expansion, which I'm not sure what the council's purpose here is. If, if this is going on and we're oblivious to it, and things are happening, what I would classify as under the radar, for lack of a better term, and I'm just concerned about this. I think this needs to be discussed, and I think it needs to be discussed openly, and I think we need to have a business plan with definitive numbers, and numbers of employees, and a variety of things about this project. I, I'm just not comfortable with this at all.
Which project are you talking about?
Well, primarily animal control. I'd like to talk about some of these other buildings too, but specifically about animal control.
Okay, your, your purpose for a work session is to accomplish what?
Well.
I'm not being facetious, I'm just asking.
No, I'd like to see a business plan. I'd like to see a definitive budget for what it's going to cost to rehab that building. I mean, the, the Humane Society, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not a member of the Humane Society or board member, but I, it seems to me when they built their building, it was a quarter million dollar facility, I think. And so I'm wondering, is that what we're going to end up doing with this? And number two, I believe in our budget session, there was a conversation about adding eight additional employees to that department, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't see that anywhere in our budget plans, and, and if they're there, then that's great. I'd love to see it.
Okay, we'll get a, we'll get a number together for you, Steve. I'll have a work session of some kind. It's not going to be, we are full up with work sessions in the next several weeks on some really important stuff, but I'll get something together for you.
Thank you.
So that you have that. My only response to the, what we're going to do with the buildings, again, you're right, I, I was never aware that there was a plan to sell all of those buildings, and it's just working out really well for us to have the ability to use buildings that we already own for departments that are virtually busting at the seams, literally. Police Department's evidence locker is completely overgrown. You know, the animal control issue, I'll just speak from, from my own standpoint on that, just for a second, I'll be brief. You know, counsel voted, I understand you oppose that, have opposed it from Jump Street all along, and voted no with everything, but the fact is that it did pass. We do have animal control responsibilities now, and I think we're doing an incredibly good job at it. You know, this most recent situation, our, our animal control people just performed wonderfully, so I hope that at some point, everybody will just understand that, that the animal control duties are now of the cities, and let's work together to try to have the best animal control product that we can possibly have. If it would have failed initially, and, and the Humane Society had it, so be it, but it didn't, it passed, so I, I hope we can get to a point where, when everybody is, is opposing it and being negative about it, that we can get our arms around this and make it the best program we can. We'll try to control costs at every single corner, but I think that in the end, when we get our animal control put together, and we're going to have a good product here. And I will get you all of the, the numbers that you need, and we'll have a public announcement of those. Forrest, please.
Thank you.
Yes, Forrest Dillard with seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. Mayor, you stated when we were taking over animal control, that we were going to save money. We were going to save, I believe it was ten thousand dollars a year. There is no way we can save ten thousand dollars a year if we're going to spend a half a million dollars fixing a building.
You're right, we're not.
Us taxpayers, well, we're going to pay whatever it costs. That ten thousand is gone. Boys, it's gone.
Okay.
Your statement was incorrect, for whatever reason, so the taxpayers are the ones that's going to take it, and the people that voted for it were probably under that same assumption, that we were going to save ten thousand dollars a year. I, it's a whole new ballgame now. It's, money doesn't count. The only thing that counts is having a world-class animal control.
Thank you, Forrest. Is there anyone else?
Motion to receive and file oral comments and to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you very much.